This is a public hearing of objections on the 27th of July, 2020 at 6:00 PM. I will record attendance. I believe that all members of the council are in attendance. If I'm incorrect in that. And I will now look for a motion to approve the agenda. I'd like a motion, please.
I'll move.
Deputy Mayor?
Michelle, thank you. And a second here, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilor Group. All in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. We'll now move to a presentation on the municipal plan bylaw, MP 20-01, by Alexander Gopin, planner for the Southwest Brunswick Service Commission. Alexander, could you take over, please?
Absolutely, Your Worship. Thank you very much. And I'm going to jump right into my presentation. It's not that one. Where did that one go? Everybody can see that, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
So I'm not going to present on the entire municipal plan. I'm going to present on the amendments that have happened since the last public hearing. But if there are questions on the entire municipal plan, I'm happy to answer them. And I'll get started. Want to leave lots of time for comments and questions. So we've had two public hearings already. And really, the primary concerns that were raised in both of those hearings were over private land. And I think it was initially a environmental buffer strip, which was then renamed the Coastal Conservation Area. And you'll see, if you attended the public presentation, this is a very similar presentation to that. But the comments were if there is an environmental buffer, aesthetic buffer around the edge of town, it should apply uniformly, and the zoning implication should be known upfront, which was something that we had recommended back some time ago. So we're circling back to that again. And there are also, I guess that line of thinking was supported by environmental concerns as well as concerns about private property. So these are really only two amended policies that are substantive, which is why we're having this public hearing again. And since it's a pretty short presentation, I'll read the whole thing. "Council shall," this is in the Environment Policies, Waterfront Title and Marsh Areas. "Council shall continue to support the use of land, use designations, green space, and environmentally significant areas through the zoning bylaw and depicted on the future land use map as environment/recreation. Land classified as green space shall serve two principal functions: as space for outdoor recreation activities or protected open space. Environmentally significant areas shall designate areas most sensitive to disturbance that contain distinctive features of biological, ecological, geological, or historical significance. Lands with these designations may be private lands and may not be open to public entry. Where the designation is on private property, no rights of public or community or (recreational) access are implied. Access on private property within the environment/recreation area may be created by any means of voluntary easements or other legal agreements duly granted by property owner." So that statement is to address the concerns over private property. A highlighted statement, that's what's been added. And the generalized future land use map is very general. The zoning map is where it gets specific. So lots of categories are kind of lumped together in the generalized future land use map. There's no distinction between different residential zones. There's no distinction between commercial zones. And so very similar to that here, there's no distinction between green space and environmentally significant areas because they have very similar implications for the zoning bylaw. The second policy that's changed, and it does relate to this. There was basically for downtown Water Street from basically from the blockhouse to right around where the campground is. That area was going to be accepted from a buffer area. So there are historical patterns of development to the water's edge. But this again was brought up as an issue for both environmental reasons and I guess reasons of fairness as well. So that's been removed. And so now that policy reads, "Council shall apply a limited development buffer area that is established adjacent to the ordinary high watermark for coastal conservation purposes. Limited development buffer area shall be used to regulate development along the St. Croix River, Katie's Cove, and the Passamaquoddy Bay with limitations for tree removal, onsite septic disposal system placement, soil control, or other environmental matters as applicable." There is also a proposal dealing with onsite septic. But it's kind of covered in the policies. So to address the questions of, well, what does this mean for zoning? The general provisions in the zoning bylaw right now, the current zoning bylaw, have a 20-meter setback all around town. And that's a complete prohibition on any development. So this is keeping in line with best practices as recommended by the Coastal Area Protection Policy, the provincial best practice guide for developing in coastal areas. They recommend 30 meters. And that's very standard. So that's going from 20 to 30 meters, but not there yet, not to the but. So some of those private residential properties that are currently in the current zoning bylaws shown as green space, because you can see that buffer on the map, they will just have their major zone going to the water's edge. So it could be a state residential. I think there's some institutional in there as well. And it doesn't need to be mapped because there is this general provision that will be in the zoning bylaw. And the but that I was referring to was if this new 30-meter setback is adopted, it's not going to have a complete prohibition on development. It does allow for low-impact responsible development that does not negatively impact the environment or aesthetics. And the best practices are, as I mentioned, the coastal air protection policy that the province recommends as best practices. And other plans like the St. Croix Corridor, which goes to St. Andrews but doesn't go into St. Andrews. And that has a 30-meter buffer zone that's quite similar. So this is what the zoning language would look like. So that's where it is. And this is actually I'll put the whole thing up just so everyone has a chance to see it. So if you're going to develop there, and you're doing an accessory structure under 56 square meters or 600 square feet, that's not for overnight accommodation. You're not subject to the environmental protection plan if you're doing repairs, alterations, and you're not making the structure bigger. Again, you're exempt from the environmental protection plan. New wheelchair ramps, stairs, decks, stairwells, unpaved car parking areas. You don't need an environmental protection plan. Accessory uses in the ESA zone, which include things like scientific research, passive recreation, shore works, things like that. Those would not require any geotechnical engineer, professional engineer, creating an environmental protection plan. If you aren't doing any of those things, so if you are, you know, building a house in that 30-meter zone, then you do need an environmental protection plan. You can't use onsite septic. And just as a general rule for that area, there is a limit on tree clearing as well, with exceptions for dead trees and trees that, you know, could fall and pose health and safety risks. But the idea would be to preserve a minimum of 75% of all existing trees or shrubs. So what actually being mapped? For reference, this is a map of the area that it would cover. And in the bottom, because I think there are some concerns over how this affects Water Street and those areas that are developed right to the water's edge historically. And as you can see from this map, that area is, it is very developed. And that essentially means there really isn't a lot of potential for new development to happen there. And this is now what the future land use map would look like. So that green buffer has been removed. There is still some areas where there are, like in Haggan's Point, there are provincially significant wetlands. You've got provincially significant wetlands. At the end of O'Neill Farm, there's provincially significant wetlands. I believe this is Pottery Brook down here. You do have some areas along here going to Katie's Cove. So there are still green space. It hasn't been entirely removed from the map. But that 30-meter buffer is what's been removed. And just to, before I get to actual questions and concerns, I did want to address some upfront. So how will this affect development on Water Street? Will it become more onerous and more expensive? So as I said, there's an outright prohibition on development within 20 meters right now. And as an example, one of the last things to be developed in that area would be the cottage trap building. And if you go back to the records, you'll find an extensive variance process with several meetings. And in the end, engineered plans were required. So if this municipal plan language as it is, is adopted in the future, if that was to happen, there would still need to be engineered plans and, you know, things to address erosion and runoff. But you wouldn't have to go through variances to do that. And as I said before, and as you can see on the map, hopefully, there really aren't any undeveloped properties that are in there. There are, you know, if you want to build a gazebo, deck, you know, any of those things that are under 600 square feet, nobody's living in them, then those are exempted. And the other concern that I've heard is there are kind of two distinct coastlines in St. Andrews. You have the more outskirts areas where there are state residential that are more countryside, if you will. And then there's Water Street, which is more of a maritime village. So, and I think that St. Andrews is known for both of those things, and they both should be preserved. They both contribute to the character of St. Andrews. And I think to address that concern, you don't have to bring your tree cover up to 75%. That's not required. It's just if there are trees already on the property, then you would be limited in the clearing. So again, that downtown portion of Water Street, you know, very limited trees down there. You can see the buildings from the water, the old wharfs, the old cribbing, those things. And this would not affect that. You would still be able to see them. So with that, I will end my presentation. And as I said before, I'm happy to take questions. There might be questions for council as well. And just, I presented on the amendments, but feel free to ask about anything in the municipal plan.
But thank you, Mr. Gopin. Mr. Knopper, I think we should probably, if we have anybody waiting who wants to make a representation, we should go there first. Can we do that?
Yeah, through your worship, we can. I'll go to our first on Zoom here. I am going to ask unmute. Penelope, you're given a chance to speak with council. If you choose to speak with them, you have the floor right now.
Thank you very much. My name is Penelope Breeze. And I want to thank your worship and town councilors and town planners for all the attention you've been paying, put to this. My property is at 249 Joe's Point Road. You've got a green splotch there for in two different maps, in the zoning map and in the generalized future land map. It's labeled environment/recreation. We've written four letters to you all over the last several months about this very vague label, environment/recreation. If you want to call it environmentally sensitive, then please don't revert to this vague term of environment/recreation. I don't know how big an area it is. I missed Mr. Copin's description of how large an area is and how it compares to the CAPP, New Brunswick Coastal Areas Protection Policy, Zone B, a 30-meter setback. I don't know how restrictive it is. And it worries me that it is going to encourage trespassing, being labeled recreation, and which will cause damage to the environment. I'm not sure about the liability that would ensue with people considering it recreational. And I'm not sure what the tax will be on my property, considering that it'll be open to trespassing. In Section 2.12, the waterfront tidal and marsh areas, it says, "Lands with these designations," meaning green space, environmentally sensitive areas, and environment/recreation, "may be private lands and may not be open to public entry." I don't know why you persist in retaining this language of "may be" and "may not be." In the zoning bylaw draft on page 38, Section 2.9, under Interpretation, it says, "Be/may is to be construed as permissive and empowering." My question is, permissive to whom? And empowering to whom? To the private property landlord or to the town council? The use of the words "may be" and "may not be" open are confusing. And construing "may" as permissive and empowering is alarming. My view is private lands are not open to the public. And that's what private property is. It's not a question of "may be" or "may not be." Bartle Bull brought this up in the last council meeting. I'm not sure why it hasn't been corrected. So I'm the last, looking at the two different maps. I believe this property on Pottery Creek is the last private property that you have continued to label environment/recreation. It's vague. It's confusing. And it encourages trespassing. So I would hope that the council will address this last remnant and eliminate it and label my property in the yellow or tan categories of the state residential, not environmental recreation. If it's a sensitive wetland, they are protected by the 30-meter setback of the New Brunswick Coastal Areas Protection Policy. I'm not sure if your category is stronger or more restrictive or more helpful. Thank you very much for listening to me. And I'd appreciate you taking into consideration what I said.
Thank you, Mrs. Breeze. Mr. Knopper?
Yep, next one. I'll go to Vic Miller. Vic, if you have any questions or comments for council, now's your time.
No, nothing at all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vic. I'll go to our next caller, the 1-801 number. You have the Florida Council.
Oh, hi. It's Lindy Townsend here. I am parked, and I hope you can all hear me. I'm hearing bits and pieces cut out, so I apologize if you're receiving the same.
Lindy, we're hearing you just fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to echo the words of Penelope Breeze. She is part of the group of the private property owners that you've received a lot of letters from. I think the main concern here is ambiguity and vagueness. And whilst Alex and Xander have done a great job at talking us through some of these items, we see them reflected. I just want to make sure that, as Penelope suggested, that she doesn't have to deal with trespassers or people who will wave a map around saying, "Well, look, it says recreation." As she said, it's the last vestige to be changed. And I'd like to offer up a solution, which is, please just change that to yellow residential. Now, I know that most people in our group, including myself, are very much aware of the environment. Katie's Cove, I've been in front of council and the mayor discussing how I like to protect the environment, and I volunteered to do so. I think Penelope is of the same mind. But what's important is that if that is environmentally sensitive and you want to color it something, I'm sure she'll take great stewardship over that part of nature. But maybe a red color would denote something that says, "Stop." Environmentally sensitive and private residential. So her whole property, but that one little corner, is indicating that it's recreational. And I'm not going to go all around in circles again because we've already done that. So I just wanted to voice that. And also, I noticed that the Part II, this is a question for you, Xander, and if council would like to weigh in, feel free. But what does the 5.3-meter indication in the Part II? I'm just trying to leaf through it while I'm on a hotspot here. Hang on. Xander, can you talk to me about what the 5.3-meter? Is it vertical? What is that?
So if, Your Worship, if I may, I can address that point.
Certainly.
And I can address, I have a list of other things to address that I'll get to once the speakers are done. So that's 5.3 meters elevation. It's Canadian geodetic vertical datum of the year 2013. And it's basically dealing with sea level rise. So 5.3 meters is, to the best of our projections and scientific knowledge, where storm surges could impact properties by the year 2100. So it's basically to protect the town for liability, to protect property owners from, and I believe the language is, "No habitable areas, no mechanical or electrical equipment." So it doesn't necessarily mean you can't build below that elevation, but no one could sleep there. You couldn't have equipment that would be damaged if water came in. That's what that 5.3 meters is.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Okay, and the very last thing, and I think I voiced this the last time I spoke, which is this. We're still working on these unperfected work products. The zoning bylaw, the municipal plan. The municipal plan alludes to strategic plans and several others. One of the largest frustrations for all of us has been this. It's very difficult to say, okay, the municipal plan so far, and we're very grateful for all the changes. And we're grateful, most importantly, for Zoom because it's enabled everyone to be able to chat civilly. And I feel it's transparent, and I wish that you would continue with Zoom meetings because Penelope can attend. I'm traveling currently, and I've stopped the vehicle so that I can attend. The most important thing is citizen input, the ratepayers' input. And I think it also makes it much more, there's more civility because we're able to go back, look at what was recorded, look what was said, make sure that we are clear on what's being said. It's very advantageous, kind of like an online education. So I would say that if you can, continue with them. They're a great thing. Or at the very least, if you're going to do face-to-face, maybe have the same kind of situation where people can phone in to listen. Or it could be a hybrid approach, face-to-face for those in town and for others who aren't there, that they can attend via this. So, and then lastly, and I thank you for your time, I promise I'm summing up. Would it be possible, I'm reiterating my request, and I think I speak for the group, that we would very much like all these documents, all these work products, to be perfected first as far as you can get them? You're making great inroads. We appreciate all of our input and you taking that on. But in order for us to understand things, and I think Penelope pointed it out exactly. She's comparing the municipal plan against the draft bylaws. But the draft bylaws are going to change quite a bit. So if it's possible, we would very much like to see all the documents that relate to the municipal plan and the draft zoning bylaws, once it's gone through all of its stages, and then vote or, you know, make a motion to ratify those at the same time after everybody's spoken about, again, the zoning bylaws because we're going to have to go through that whole process again. I promised that was the last thing, but I just have one more quick question. Xander, or Your Worship, or council members, is this the first, second, third reading of the draft municipal plan? I've lost the plot.
Through your worship, I can field that. So currently, we're at second, we've already had second reading of the municipal plan. But due to significant changes that have come from the documents and from our public hearings, we're back to having a public hearing of objection to meet the criteria for the Community Planning Act. But we are in discussions with council tonight about ensuring all documents will hopefully be at the same level at the same time for review with all of the public. So we are gearing up to meet the request.
Oh, thank you very much. Listen, I really appreciate it and all the hard work everybody's doing on this. And we look forward to being able to look at the whole package and being able to be part of that. So thank you very much. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Snopper?
Yeah, through your worship, I'll just make one extra point. Our goal is, when we do go back to in-person meetings, is to continue through Zoom and through Facebook Live. So everybody will still have the opportunity to participate, whether they're in person or from home or wherever you are. So in that context, we will still go through that. At this point, that takes care of everyone on Zoom who has comments or questions. I'm going to go to Facebook for these comments, and I only have two. They are from Cindy Kohler. The first question, and this was when, Xander, you were discussing the The first question, and this was when, Zander, you were discussing the downtown, the historical business district and some of the, the heights and lines, but one of the questions was, what about developing current lines of sight on Water Street? That was the first question, and how it relates to development. And second, does this mean that there can actually be more development allowed than before on Water Street based on the 30-meter setbacks and, and the zoning within the historical business district? So, your worship, or Zander, if you would like to respond, you have the opportunity now. There's no more questions or comments from either Zoom or Facebook.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Nopper, and thank you, everybody, for the comments. I also really love doing this over Zoom, because at the end of meeting, I just post my computer, and I'm already home. So I agree with that, and it definitely does make for, I think it does make for a more engaging process, on a serious note. So I'm just going to go through the comments in order, so starting with Ms. Breeze. So there, there are other areas that are still private lands, that are still marked environment recreation on the future land use map. There's the point on O'Neill Farm Road. That's, that's also a provincially significant wetland. And with, so the municipal plan is the highest land use document, and it goes beyond just land use in a strict sense for the town, and its, its intent is to be a little bit general and a little bit vague, because the idea is that the policies and proposals, while proposals are a little bit more specific, the policies feed into other documents like the zoning bylaw where things do get very specific. So using language like "may" is something that's done in municipal plans. It really is not something that's done in zoning bylaws, because they need to be a lot more black and white. And the future land use map is, is kind of the same thing. So it's, it's supposed to be general and vague to, to a certain extent. It kind of informs the zoning bylaw, you know, this is a residential area. Now, in that residential area, there might be the state residential, serviced residential, apartment buildings, multiple residential, but it, it means that if you want to rezone from, let's say, a serviced residential to a multiple residential, you want to build a small apartment building, you still have to go through a rezoning process, but you don't have to amend the municipal plan, which indicates to me, as the person I've been working on that file, the municipal plan, at least in, in its location, supports this. There might be other things that do or don't in relation to housing or heritage or character, but the map is important for that. So the environmentally significant areas and green space, they have very similar treatments in the zoning bylaw, and that's why they're lumped together into one category in, in this municipal plan map. And, and that's why the policy, so the "may," it, the green, green spaces are oftentimes open to the public, some of them are public parks. Katie's Cove, while on private land, is open to the public, as is Pagan Point. So, so it is a little general, and, and I actually spoke with, with Mr. Bull at some length after the last public hearing, and he made some suggestions that made a lot of sense. There was a little bit of tweaking to kind of make the more municipal plan policy language, but his recommendations were certainly included, and, and I think they did tighten up the language. But it does, again, need to be slightly general, because that's the way municipal plans are. And I think the last thing to address is, I know there is concern over private property and, and this map. So this map is in the municipal plan. The municipal plan is, well, I hope lots of people read it, because there's a lot of hard work that's gone into it. It's really for council. It's, you know, it is available to the public. It's, it's an important document, and while I hope lots of people read it, if you're a tourist coming to town, you, you would go to the, you know, the Chamber of Commerce website that talks about the town. The town website where the municipal plan is hosted is for residents. You go into the bylaws page, so I, I'm not trying to diminish the concerns over private property, but, but this is not a tourist map. This is really a map for planning purposes for council, and it's not impossible that someone would use it in that way, but it, it wouldn't be a very good map for tourism, I don't think. I don't think it would be terribly helpful. So I, I just wanted to say that. I addressed the 5.3 meters. Paul, as Mr. Nopper, addressed the, the idea of all bylaws being adopted at the same time. With the current lines of sight that Ms. Kohler brought up, that's, that's kind of addressed in the, I think it would be the heritage section of the municipal plan that deals with massing and scale and height. So it's not, lines of sight, I should actually check here, there, there might even be language about it, but the language informs the zoning bylaw around height, and that, that is a conversation that we are having with the zoning bylaw, with council, and I, I think there's been some public comments about that as well. And just want to see what this language is here. I, I know there's language around preserving lines of sight to the water, and, and that really is for the zoning bylaw to say, hey, you know, we're not going to have 26-story buildings on Water Street or, or buildings that will block lines of sight. So I, I think it is addressed, and the question about will this lead to more development on the water? So there is development that goes to the water's edge currently, and what could be done now are, I would say, very low impact, or what could be done with the new municipal plan and zoning bylaw are very low-impact developments, you know, maybe a gazebo, some decking, if you want to have stairs to walk down to the water. There are things that wouldn't, if, if there were things that were going to be disturbing the earth in the way that could create erosion issues, that's when environmental protection plans would be required, and they wouldn't be tall buildings, they, so I don't think they would interrupt sightlines. And while the zoning bylaw currently does have a blanket prohibition on development within 20 meters, because it's the zoning bylaw, that can be varied. So that's, that's how Cottage Craft was able to rebuild. So it, I don't think it would lead to more development. I think it places the appropriate requirements on development for that area, and things that would have a large impact would have to show that that impact is being mitigated and minimized. So in, in my mind, the policy works very well, and it will save some administrative burden of, of having to go through variances. And then another issue with variances is that they are decided, right now, they are decided by a regional body, so it's not, while there is a representative from St. Andrews on that body, it isn't entirely made up of St. Andrews residents. So this puts control by having a municipal plan and the zoning bylaw the way it is, or as proposed, that, that gives council control.
Zander, or your worship, if I could add to Zander's comments?
Yes, certainly.
I think Zander raised some good points about view planes and view planes to water, which I know is a, it's a, it's an important thing for a lot of people in St. Andrews. Obviously, you have a beautiful location. So I, for example, I, we, we have two policies right now, or two provisions in the zoning bylaw, which conflict with each other. One, which is 20 meters, allowing for certain, exempting certain types of accessory developments in that 20 meters, and then, and then a, sorry, 20 feet, pardon me, and then we have a 20-meter general development prohibition. They do conflict with each other. So when we're looking at development in that 20 meters, automatically, right now, it requires a variance. It's, it's not a, it's a bit of a clunky system. So where we're looking at low-impact development, automatically, in that 20 meters, it has to go through a variance process, and one of the things that we have considered is, is the, is view planes and how it could infect view planes. And one of the things where, where we do have to consider whether is a development and there is considerations like variances or so on, we are, we are aware, we issue developments that we have to keep in mind, these policies, and something like view planes is important, but also, one of the ways that I think that is being addressed through another municipal policy is the street ends policy, when it comes to council, keeping those street ends open, that is, that's an important sightline to the, to the water.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Mr. Nopper, I think we're at the end of our hearing of objections. I will, therefore, if there's nothing else from council, I will look for a motion to adjourn, please.
Through your worship, can I just make one extra point?
You may.
So council was provided with four letters of objection, so this must be noted in our, in the process, so you were provided with those letters. And I just want to note, you've had 25 people viewing on Facebook and three, three participants through Zoom, so you've had a very well-participated public hearing of objection, and there's no other comments, questions from the Facebook, and no additional new members on Zoom, so you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Nopper. We'll now look for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll move.
Thank you, Counselor Acquity, and a second.
Gomishel Harrison.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Gomishel, I didn't see you. Thank you, Counselor Gomishel. If there aren't any comments, I'll call the question. All in favor of adjourning the meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, were adjourned. Thank you, council, and thank you to all those who participated this evening.